Got it. You're all set. Have a good meeting.
We're gonna call this November 1st meeting of the City of Zoning Board of Appeals to order. This meeting is regarding the proposed 40B project known as the cottages at Old Open Bucket Road. Before we get started, we'd like to remind everyone that in addition to being here in the select board hearing room, tonight, we are available on Zoom. Broadcast on our, Seth, are we broadcasting live on Facebook or is that a recorded?
You are broadcasting live on Facebook and on Comcast. This is being recorded, so everyone is aware.
There we go. He covered that part. It is being recorded for those purposes. Also, the City of Zoning Board of Appeals is committed to providing an environment of respect during meetings. We ask all members to interact in a polite manner even when there's disagreement. We value the participation of our community and want all participants, including marginalized and minoritized communities, to feel open to respect. We ask our committee members and all who participate to commit to these standards to support and respect our community. With that, we have seen a significant redesign of the project. Significant in certain aspects and maybe not significant in others in that it is, we're gonna hear more from the applicant, but to give the audience and everyone else a preview of what the board has been made aware of. Most notably, we're going from 32 units to 24, and also no attached units are in the new proposal. So the proposal is made up entirely of freestanding or I think you can refer to as single-family homes. I think it would be best if you folks told us a little bit more about the redesign.
Excellent. Okay, so for the record, Attorney Jeff Delisiem, here with my client Dan Lovendale to my right, as well as with our engineer Mark Casey all the way on the opposite end of the table. On the call tonight, on the Zoom call, is a gentleman by the name of Jeffrey Dirk. Jeffrey is our traffic engineer from the Nassin Associates Traffic Consultants. And so just to give, I think because it is, you know, we started this process in April, and we had a second meeting in June. And it has been a period of time since that last meeting, and I thought I'd take just a minute or two to reacquaint everybody with the project if possible. So essentially, the property consists of three assessed parcels having an aggregate of a little more than 11 acres of land. The mailing address of the property is 279 to 281 Old Open Bucket Road. Last year, the Conservation Commission approved a delineation of the wetlands, and the commission will also in the future, when we're concluded with this hearing process, should be receiving approval. We would be filing a notice of intent application with the Conservation Commission for the commission to deal with what is in its jurisdiction. There are no map wildlife priority habitat areas on the property. The property presently contains a two-family dwelling having a total of five bedrooms. Last year, the state of Massachusetts issued a site eligibility approval for this site to authorize a maximum of 34 units, nine of which would be de-restricted for low to moderate income persons that qualify or families that qualify. As I indicated, our first meeting was in April. Our second meeting was in June. The town did not engage, and this board did not engage peer review engineering until mid-June, June 14th, and we did not receive a report from the town's peer review engineer until August. And so it was at that juncture that we kind of began the process of answering, answering questions and trying to tick off the boxes of issues that were articulated by town's peer review consultants over at Merrill, as well as the town. I believe that Merrill had subbed out a traffic peer review from the traffic consultants. So in the month of August, and I know that engineers are here with us, I know your representative engineer, Deb Keller, from Merrill, and is here as well, but they can talk to it better. There was some question about perk tests that we needed to answer and engage in. We needed to do some more diligence, and it was that effort that really kind of brought us to where, you know, where we are today, which is that even though we dropped the amount of units from 32 to 24, Mark can talk about this a little better. The perk test drive, our bedroom count for Title V purposes, and so while we still could have 34 units, we're limited to 66 bedrooms. And so that's our starting point for the redesign. And so Mark will kind of walk the board through the design, and then I'm gonna ask Jeffrey Dirk to address it from the traffic perspective when the board feels necessary. And I think we take it from there. I, Janine, if you're able to pull up whatever plan mark you want for purposes of the presentation.
The one with the red A's.
Let me take it from there.
Hey, I'm Mark Casey with South Shore Survey Consultants. Deb Keller, your peer review engineer, had asked if we do some more perk testing area with the soil absorption system area that Seth was wanting to do, which we did. We did numerous observation holes and soils evaluation. All the areas where drainage is indicated, drainage structures are indicated on the plan. The additional perk test in the soil absorption system area was very slow. So the bottom line is the slower the perk rate, the larger the soil absorption system has got to be. So since we only have a limited area, that's why we've gone down to 66 bedrooms.
And Mark, the soil absorption system is approximately in this area over here?
Yes.
Okay.
In the other direction?
Yeah, I'm sorry, my back.
Yeah, that's it.
This area here.
Okay. So on the 279?
Well, on the parcel itself, I don't know. I'm not as familiar with the mailing address, but in that spot.
And also, you can see the road used to come all the way around, okay? So we've created a T here, and serving these two houses, 12 and 13, we have a driveway and a sidewalk that comes down to another common driveway to serve units 10 and 11. And Dan has had numerous interactions with the fire chief. And the width of the road is 22 feet. The width of the, this area here, common driveway, and this area here are 14 feet. And the fire chief, since we're sending a change, the fire department, the fire chief are happy with the new layout.
Just to supplement that, this board has received confirmation in writing from the deputy chief that they are in approval of this plan.
We also, if you look at, probably kind of hard to see, but on units 3, 8, 13, 16, 20, and 22, I placed it red A on those units, and they are now designated as affordable.
Can we just have that list again?
It is 3, 8, 13, 16, 20, and 22.
And while we're speaking of those units, do we have the bedroom counts on those units?
So Dan can talk.
Tell me if I'm skipping. I don't want to.
Dan, we talked about, the short answer is no.
Okay.
We, we, we haven't yet determined the bedroom counts as they can be allocated. But what, you know, our recollection of our prior conversations is that you wanted to make certain that you, that we would de-restrict units that are proportionate, right, to the number of bedrooms. So if we had five, three bedrooms, that one of the five would be included as being that de-restricted. And so we're gonna commit to that, but for purposes of this hearing, we're not certain where the count's gonna fall as far as the bedroom numbers. It might be something that is determined at a later time based on market issues.
Okay, and quick, quick math. You said 24 units and 66 bedrooms, so I think that's gotta be, you've got to average like 2.7 or something. So there's gonna be quite a bit proportionally of two-bedroom units to get the countdown, right?
You could, the quickest way to break that up would be, and this is not my step, what would be, like 18 three-bedroom and six two-bedroom.
Okay, so we, we also have an explanation from, from Dan, your Dan.
Yeah.
Yeah, we said two, three, and four, so to the, I guess the answer is you still figure that out.
We're still figuring that out. We're gonna commit to the proportionality that, you know.
If we have.
We're not gonna make the five worse units to the five, you know, with five bedrooms.
Small, yeah, exactly, that's right.
It's a two-to-one ratio between the two.
Do we have four three-bedrooms, one room's gonna be a four?
Yeah.
Right. What was the basis of your choice of designating now those units as the affordable housing units?
We, we.
They're pretty well spread out, right?
Well, I just want to get from that.
And we should also point out that that is not written in, so obviously, you know, if you have, if you have a different idea about where the affordable units or your peer review engineers got a different idea of where you would like to see the affordable units, we're certainly open to discussing that.
So, so.
The only comment we have previously is we didn't want to see all the clusters back.
Which I, I think this plan is indicative of our previous comments that we wanted to see it relatively.
Sorry, and as you know, as you know, the exterior of the affordable units that can't be discerned from the market rate. You're gonna use cedar shakes on the market rate, you're gonna use cedar shakes, and you're gonna have copper roof on the market rate, you've got to have copper roof on the affordable units.
One of the collateral benefits of reducing the, the number of units and going with the redesign is that there will be a fairly material reduction in the amount of impervious area on the site also, which is always a, always a benefit, whether that be for stormwater purposes or combined house purposes or what have you. So I just wanted to mention that. Mark, do you have anything?
I just wanted to quickly address that Mr. Kiran brought up on more than one occasion, setbacks. And I've selectively, this is in the R1 zoning district, so the front setback is 30, side setback is 15, rear is 30. The only exception that I find is an accessory one-story building can be 8. But maybe that we have no accessory structures on this, on this property. So really, we have mostly side setback issues all the way back here, which I would determine to be back property line. So there are some spots where we won't be able to meet these side setbacks. If you look at unit 18, by way of example, it is.
10.1.
10.1 foot, but then if you come down to unit 13, we are at 27.5. So we're significantly over. Unit 9, we're kind of at a choke point there, so that's 8.3. But if you go down just a few units to unit 7, you are at 26.6. And unit 1, 2, really the only two units where a front setback is involved. And so unit 1 to the stone wall and into the road layout is 9.8 feet, and unit 2 is 7.2 feet. All the others front on the road system. So we'll be obviously asking for setback waivers.
Right.
Really can't comply.
What's five there? Obviously, we're gonna get a list of all these and move on, but.
Five, since it's facing the street, I would consider five a, to the left side of five to the road layout. I didn't, I didn't tag it. It appears to be at the 6, 6 and 1/2 feet. But notice that visually, to the edge of the pavement as it exists, it's 15.9 feet.
Right, it's 5, 0, not 1, 5.
Right, but then rather close, it looks like, is that, is that all the right-of-way that cuts in that far beyond the pavement?
Yes.
All right, so it is rather close to the right-of-way.
It's a very, it's a very odd.
Right-of-way cut.
Yep, it says, we have some very, very odd shaped road layouts.
Yep.
That are not symmetrical. We get a subdivision recently on Alden Street in Duxbury. Found the old plans. I could not believe it. I'd never seen anything so bizarre in my life.
You know, one of the things that I kind of struggled with when we were trying to address the setback question, or at least when it was first raised, was, well, how do we look at these, right? Like, do we, because the site itself has frontage on Old Open Bucket Road, and the rear, the rear property line is opposite that way back towards the woods, and then, and then you have it sides. But because we're creating a right-of-way, and the houses are gonna be oriented such that the front of the homes mostly are along the right-of-way, the rear of the homes would appear to be behind the homes, but that's actually really a side yard. So it's, it's a little strange.
So, but the code addresses that.
Oh, okay.
So our, our code of front setback, and we explain this a lot in our hearings, it's irrespective of the, of the situation of the home. A public way, I should say, is a front setback under our code. And when you have two front setbacks on a lot, the opposing corner creates a radial rear setback. And to your point, anything not covered by those would be side.
Right.
So in a strange aspect, you, now, when you get a lot that's not a square like this, you need a PhD in geometry to figure out where the rear and the side is. For the purposes of when we start to put together a relief list, I think in terms of Old Open Bucket Road, that's going to be a 30-foot setback, and you're going to need relief from that for all three of those units. Now, that is not to say that, that it's just that black and white. Obviously, we consider the aspect and layout of the house and clear access to and from the houses in our consideration of relief, of course. But by letter of the code, which I think is better for all of us to the extent we end up granting relief, we crank that relief. That would be a front setback along Old Open Bucket for the purpose of the relief need.
Yeah, we want to take a conservative approach for purposes of the request for waivers. And the setbacks are what they are, right? It's just a question of what are we requesting a waiver from? What is the requirement, which was a little bit of a head scratcher to me, yeah, at different times.
Sure.
But either, and I just wanted to point it out, that they are what they are, and that's really what I just matters again.
So clarification just right out, so anything that's on, does this road, we haven't made it for this road yet, or?
No.
Whatever's on this road, right of way. Is that the frontage for that? And thus, is the rear setback on unit 9 only 8.3 feet or whatever it is?
So Bob, do you, in improving building permits and determining that they do not need relief from a shared driveway?
Yep.
Would you require, before, unless someone came to us for relief, obviously, a 30-foot setback from a shared driveway?
No.
No. But a private way that was used for access, you would require?
Correct.
And it gets a little fun. We could probably have several more meetings about whether we want to consider this new access road a shared driveway or a private way.
Right, so you just use the term access road, right?
Yes.
Just to give a benchmark, right?
Yep.
We're gonna be talking about zoning by law. There's a section in the zoning by law, which is in section 600, I want to say like section 630, the project on Country Way that was just constructed down under that category.
Yep.
That, that was, that, that was deter, that, that bylaw references, I want to say, access way as opposed to a road, and as a result, there could be some funky interpretations. But I ran it through only because I was, I was part of the development team on that project.
Sure.
So we're gonna need to get into that particular issue, but just to, in case the board had nothing to do on a, on a random Friday night and wanted to look at it, it's called a residential compound development. And it's in section 610.2D, 2D, I think.
Yep, yep.
And, and it says it's a private access road. So anyway, and the frontage has, frontage, the track has frontage as opposed to, I think.
And I think just everybody, I think, we need that clarified.
Yeah, we need to clarify, but I'm gonna be viewing this for purposes of fashioning request for waivers as conservatively as possible. So I'm gonna be looking at the rear of the buildings on the left side as if their rear are setback, even if they might be side yard. Right?
No, no, okay, I wouldn't think so. No, I would, Bob, tell me if you disagree, but even Jeff, to your point, from the more conservative sense, everything abutting the Old Open Bucket right-of-way would be viewed as a front setback. Everything abutting the newly constructed road.
Everything.
Newly constructed way. Everything abutting the newly constructed way, unless you want to point to us otherwise in that section, would be a front setback.
Right.
And then the two property lines that are to the, north is up on this plan? No.
No.
North is not up on that plan, no. Everything, everything on the right side of the property, the two vertical lines on the right side of the property, would be rear setback lines. So this, the lower right side of the property where you have your wetlands, you're not concerned. But the, the back of 19 and the, and the side of 18, those would be rear setbacks. Everything else would be side.
Well, well.
The way I, way I look at this lot, because it's with respect to the right-of-way.
Every other unit?
You know what, Jeff?
Is it two?
But then it's, it gets a little crazy, because then if you start to look at the road as a road, then you have more rears, right?
Yes, exactly. So I think one thing to start with is looking at stock, which might make you find out what was done there.
Yeah.
The layout's pretty similar situation, I think you're on into in terms of this clustering of the units is pretty similar.
So perhaps, Jeff, your original point is, is right. When you're, when you're faced with which one is it, why not write up your request for relief based on the, the larger requirement?
Yeah, and that's it, maybe both, maybe both.
Or, or both.
Yeah.
That's a better statement. I'm sorry. I honestly, whether something under the way our code is written is a side or a rear, I'm not sure that's going to be the legitimate in this board's decision of relief on that setback. We're gonna look at the project as a whole.
Okay, all right, well, I, I didn't mean to confuse the board.
No.
It's okay with you, yeah. No worries.
It's a head scratcher for me.
Yeah.
That, that makes sense. And just so we're all on the same page, the units that are along Old Open Bucket, the ones, I guess, that they wanted to choose specifically, the reason that those are not further away from Old Open Buckets because of the wetlands, is that correct?
Oh, so the wetlands, and we have to, the common driveway coming in. So the actual front of those houses, the hash lines, you didn't want to be the garage.
Understood, but the reason you couldn't put the common driveway further back is because of the wetlands?
We, we could, we could push it back a little bit.
Can I see what you're saying? So you, you're. So it's been, it's been a question that was raised, I think, by the, by the public at one of the prior hearing, and it's the one, it's the one issue, I think, most obvious from the existing road, right? Is you have units that will be too close, and I mean that in quotes, right, as, as the code is currently to that road. So the question is, why are they there? One of the questions is why are those two slash three units? And I think the unit number five is sort of self-evident kind of why it's there in the literature, right? That one makes everything more understandable. The question is, can one and two, a question, not a question, what are, can one and two be pushed slightly further back, right? Because we already know that they're not gonna be in codes.
So, so what happens in this case is the impervious surface will come very close to the 25-foot setback from the wetlands.
Okay, so it is.
We, we can do it a bit, and we can move it back. So the, the edge of the common driveway will be very close to the 25-foot setback. The structure itself obviously will be outside the 50-foot setback, so.
Right, that's, I'm just, I don't know.
No, no, I think that's a, I understand. I think that's a top-tier issue in terms of location.
Well, we'll, we'll push those two units back as much as practical.
Yeah, remember, you're, you're wearing the hat of the local wetland regulations for purposes of review of this comprehensively. So under the local regulations, there's a no-bill buffer strip to resource area. You're acting in the authority of death, but under the state regulations, there is no no-bill buffer strip. So so long as we conform with the best management practices determined by the Conservation Commission, we're good. So you have the authority to tell us, yes, you can go into that area if necessary.
Well, that's more than that, that one's right.
That's, yeah.
So that's all, you know, the question was, why is it there? You're being considerate of the wetlands, right? Further back, it raises the wetlands question. There, that's, I just want it out there so that everybody.
We, we try to respect the 25-foot.
Right.
Got it.
I think, I think it's probably safe for the time being that we would like to see those two units get as far away from Old Open Bucket Road as they can without violating the town's 25-foot setback.
Right.
And then we'll hear from the voters, we'll see what that looks like, and then we, to Jeff's point, have the authority to bend the 25 feet if we want more space on the other side, but I think we definitely want it as far back as we can without violating it.
Exactly. Right, right now, how are these houses oriented? Is the back of the house, are you saying Old Open Bucket, on one and two?
No, one through the front of the side, you'll see from Old Open Bucket. It's a rear entry garage.
All right, I see.
But yeah, the way it's oriented, you'll see the front.
All right, it's at the front.
We also want to respect the driveway length as well, so we, we can't push it too much further back because insurance and driveway.
Okay.
Were, uh, uh, were you concerned with, uh, is that question really geared towards units one and two, or, or did it also include that bank of units among the side yard from twelve to eighteen? I'm just curious if you intended that in your discussion.
Well, I mean, twelve, twelve and eighteen. Right, so if you go up on the plan, twelve and eighteen, right, what's off from the property line, what's on the other side of that property line, private, right, private, that's private waters, right?
Yeah, there's, there's a stream on the other side, so there's, there's basically natural vegetation that won't be disturbed because it can't be, um, uh, on that opposite side, I think.
Right. You can, you can see in blue here, we've got the top of the inland bank, uh,
Right, and then the second blue line.
On the eastly, eastly side is the former code intermittent stream. Uh, then we've got the fifty foot buffer, okay, to the top of the inland bank and the hundred foot buffer. So the fifty is back here, and just right about here actually kisses our property line.
Question, question for you. These units flaps?
Nope.
They're gonna have basements?
Correct.
All right. Fiberglass basements?
Put the ditch down there.
Um, all right, we'll, we'll get to that, it's a little soggy over there. Um, yeah. I think for me, with the setbacks of those units, I, I think the, I think the board sort of understands that it'd be great to not need relief from those setbacks either, but you're running out of space with the leachy field, with what the fire department, what's, is going to want, with your unit count, so that's a lot more complicated, but it, but that.
Right.
The little button was a no break.
That's right, and I, and I, and I think that, you know, you answered my question, right? Which is, from a, sort of a, call it a thin key standpoint, from, uh, posing yourselves on a butter, right, you have a fifty foot buffer zone off the intermittent stream. So, you know, that's, nobody's gonna be building arguably in that area. So I, you know, that could be a level of comfort for those units. I think, again, my, I don't wanna say my biggest issue, low issue that I have heard um, from, uh, citizens, has been really focused on what this all looks like from a whole, whole, and we have other issues other than that that we have to work out. Right, have to be, have to minimize any of those. Um, but I, I think we have to take, you know, Chairman said, uh, we can take that as your question.
Would you like to hear from, uh, from Mr. Jerk as to the traffic issues, or did you maybe want to speak with, um, your consultant, uh?
To, to be honest, I, maybe from our engineer, the only reason that I'm not necessarily inclined to go directly to your traffic engineer, because I've actually heard from your traffic engineer quite a bit, and while I am not an expert in traffic, this is less units and less cars, so I, I think we all anticipate that.
And more importantly, significantly fewer bedrooms.
Yeah.
Right, so even beyond the units, right, we're not looking at a lot of fours and threes, so the three and two situation, we're at sixty-six bedrooms. It's all, unless the number of people that people.
Right. I, I think if, you know, if anything, I, on, on traffic, we want to hear from the butters, and then I, I'd be much more interested in what our traffic engineer now has to say in light of the new units, and in light of whatever revisions to their prior report, your traffic engineer has. Um, is there anything else you have from your presentation, other than obviously responding to some questions that we know are gonna come up?
No, except to say that, just to comment on the overall process that we're engaging in, because, um, what our goal with today's meeting is to point you to this new layout. Uh, we recognize that it's, it's, you know, not the best to keep this process, you know, going forever, right? Um, so what, what we would expect moving forward would be, um, uh, there will be a period of time where the engineering will need to be, um, further refined, and then we need to be back and forth between the engineers to get it to a point such that when we come back next, we would expect to be able to say to you, here, here are the engineering issues that were, were reviewed, here are any that remain, and, um, you know, it could be more of a technical, I would imagine it'd be a little more of a technical hearing. And so, uh, we're expecting that there probably needs, you know, that we're gonna be requesting a continuance. You know, it would be into December, probably, you know, getting closer to the end of December, more than the beginning of December. And that, you know, because we're, we're looking at is, what is a realistic timeframe for all of this work to occur in between? And we're probably, we're probably thinking of six weeks or seven weeks or thereabouts from today. So I just wanted to throw that out there, and I think, so you look at the, um,
It's, I can't, I can't complain about how long you need and then complain when we don't have what we want for the next hearing, right? So it's, I just want to.
Right, I don't want, I don't want to be in a position where we're requesting a continuance, like, I, I want to be, this is enough time to get us where we need to be, and then, um, you know, we're in a better position to be more substantive.
I agree.
Yeah, and look, nobody's, you guys have made significant changes since the last two meetings, right, this is eighteen plan. It's, it's, it's very good, but, you know, with, with this plan, we've moved, uh, far along, right? We, right, fire department is sort of the, right, we need to discuss traffic, which is different than it was previously. Right, and, and all that, so.
Could I, I could just point out, in my world, everything affects everything.
Sure, that's all I mean.
Yeah, this is a very, very significant redesign. So we now have more soils inflammation, uh, et cetera, et cetera, so everything is, everything is redesigned and tweaked.
Sure.
Yeah.
Would you have a representative to hear from Merrill? Anything you'd like to add at this point, and obviously, you may come back up and, and please, when we go to the public and then the board's gonna have some questions, please don't be shy about interjecting. We love to hear from people that have some math and facts to back up what they're saying, so it's always very helpful. But please.
Deb Keller from Merrill Engineers, I also have Kirsten Braun from Braun Mueller Associates, Traffic, uh, Sub Consultant Period, uh, she's on Zoom. If you'd like to hear from her with respect to the traffic. From an engineer in standpoint, um, I, I really, the, the layout has been adjusted due to soil, um, testing results that has occurred on the site, um, don't have much else to say on the new layout until I get the revised plans from an engineering, you know, great, great engineer and such, so I'll be waiting for that next, that'll be a big package for from myself, from an engineering perspective. But I'd like to, so can you ask Kirsten to, uh, do just a summary on the traffic?
That'd be great.
Kirsten?
I think, Kirsten, you should be, there you go, you're unmuted.
Yeah, I'm unmuted now, uh, just for the record, Kirsten Braun, Traffic Reviewer with Braun Mueller Associates. Uh, we did review the original traffic study that was done for the site. Uh, I know there have been some changes, if anything, the changes traffic wise are good. Um, any reduction in, in unit count may result in, in less traffic than they had assumed in the study. Um, and I do want to point out too, that residential developments, especially one of this scale, uh, typically have, have low impacts, they're, they're low traffic generators. Uh, we did have some comments, um, several comments on the study, a lot of which won't impact the actual findings of the study. Uh, there are more suggestions or asking for additional information. Um, our original comment was that there was some confusion between the plans that we had received in the traffic study we had gotten from Vanas. Uh, there was a discrepancy, discrepancy between a mix of units and the unit count, but again, based on this updated plan, uh, it looks like that information will get ironed out. Uh, we did note that a few intersections within a study area, uh, did have some safety issues, uh, specifically the intersections of Old Oak and Bucket Road and Maple Street and Old Oak and Bucket Road at Route one twenty-three. Uh, both of these intersections did have crash rates that were much higher than the statewide and district wide averages. So we did suggest that the town include a condition of approval, that RSAs or road safety audits uh, be completed and submitted to the town prior to any issuance of a certificate of occupancy. Uh, we also asked that the applicant look into, uh, into other background developments that might be in Norwell, I think, sites proximity, there might be some sort of developments there that would have an impact on traffic volumes within this study area. Uh, we asked for a little more information regarding the unsignalized intersection capacity analysis tables. Uh, we just requested that they include, uh, the volume to passy ratios, as this information is, um, is pretty relevant to help measure the, the impacts of a project. Um, as, as part of traffic studies, we always take a look at, at the safety of the site access point, and it was noted in the study, uh, that there is some existing vegetation that will need to be removed along the south side of Old Oak and Bucket Road, uh, and also an embankment east of the site that will need to be regraded to make sure that sightlines exiting the site uh, meet or exceed the minimum requirements to allow for safe operation. So as part of that, we, we did go out there and we field, um, observed these, these sightlines ourselves, and we do agree that there are limitations. So we suggested that the applicant include a sightline profile and plan uh, to ensure that any landscaping, uh, fences, any objects are, are not located within these site triangles. Uh, and we also want to make sure that the embankment is, is regraded well enough to, uh, ensure the adequate sightlines can be seen, uh, to really allow motorists residents to get in and out safely. Um, we did have a few comments on the site plan, uh, which I, I've briefly seen the updated plan that was circulated last week. Uh, but we do suggest that an interior signing and striping plan, uh, be shown, and we also recommend that a stop line and stop sign be placed on the driveway exit to Old Oak and Bucket Road. Um, I, this has already been answered, we did suggest that they, uh, reach out to the fire department to, to, uh, ensure adequate accessibility to all sides of the dwellings, which it sounds like has been worked out. Uh, but really, those are just the highlights of our review, we haven't seen a response to our comments yet. Uh, but we do look forward to reviewing them when we receive them. Uh, as I mentioned, the reduction in unit counts will, will benefit traffic impacts. Uh, the study assumed thirty-two units, I believe, so twenty-four will, will definitely, um, reduce any sort of traffic impacts associated with the study.
Thank you, Kristen, just a couple of follow-up questions while we have you. Obviously more to come when, when everyone receives their revised plans and probably get some more specific answers to some of your questions. Um, if I'm remembering correctly, from the applicant's traffic engineer, their contention was that while we have those two intersections that you mentioned that are less than desirable from a safety standpoint, their contention, and I'm paraphrasing, was that a development of this size didn't have anything approaching a significant impact on the situation at those two intersections. Your analysis, even your analysis at the thirty-two unit town, did it match up with that?
I, I think a lot of times when it comes to these size of developments, um, sure, they, they have, you know, a minor traffic impact uh, when compared to other sorts of developments, but you also don't want to, um, create a larger issue than already exists out there. Uh, I think when we do most studies, if, if there, um, you know, for the DOT, it's any amount of traffic you add to a, an unsafe intersection is enough for the intersection to be studied more. And I also think that they had agreed to contribute, and, and Jeff can correct me if I'm wrong, uh, to implementing, uh, I know an RSA was done um, at one of the intersections already, and they had agreed to implement some of the low cost improvements there. Um, RSAs aren't typically a, a huge lift, um, if anything, if you're adding traffic to these intersections, you don't want to exacerbate the problem that already exists out there, which is why we suggested that they, they perform the RSAs out there. Um, it's one of those things where it's not, it's not set in stone, I suppose, what you have to do when it comes to, um, RSAs with the towns, uh, but we would suggest that they do them out there.
So, Janine, help me recall, because we had some, it's been a little while now since we had some discussions. Well, if I remember correctly, the DPW indicated that they were not interested in pursuing an RSA for that intersection? They did. And, well, it's two. I, I think, uh, this was primarily Old Oak and Bucket and Maple, which I think the engineers agreed, this development because of proximity of, I think, maybe a couple hundred yards, would have a, to the extent it had a, an impact, it has much more of an impact on that intersection. Given that the other intersection that isn't fantastic is, is probably more than, over a half a mile away.
Yeah.
Um, but DPW indicated that they did not wish to pursue an RSA on that intersection. I don't understand why, which is not an indication that I fully disagree with that, I just didn't understand why. Um, Kirsten, to the extent, once you go another round with the applicant, you still feel that an RSA is necessary? I, I would love to receive some more information from you as to maybe your thoughts on why the town wouldn't want to pursue that? And what the potential negatives of that would be, because I, I didn't fully understand why, I, I certainly have some ignorance when it comes to the global picture of goods and bads with RSAs, but I couldn't find the downside to pursuing it, other than time. And I'm, I'm not familiar with the cost. Um, so I was surprised, but it, the DPW may very well have a good reason for that, it's just not a reason I'm familiar with.
I mean, we haven't received responses yet from Jeff, but, I mean, one thing they can certainly look into is, is not necessarily if, if the town doesn't, doesn't see a need to push it on. Maybe they can certainly collect the crash data from the police department and go through the exercise of, um, analyzing crashes, uh, see if there's any certain trends out there themselves that they might have, um, suggestions for on how to improve. Um, oftentimes you'll see when, when you pull crash data intersections, you'll, you'll be able to see quite easily, you know, where the downfalls are of an intersection. Um, so that's something Jeff might, might take, uh, take into consideration in his responses, is, is perhaps pulling that crash data from the police department to, to take at least a, an initial look themselves at, at what the crash trends are out there.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you, Kristen. Um, I think I'd like to go to the members of the audience and then come back to the board, but I, I don't, I don't want to, if someone from the board has something that they'd like to get out now, I don't want to stop that. I do. Um, all right, we are going to go to our folks that we have here in the select board hearing room first, and if that goes on too long, I might give the folks on this, on Zoom a, a chance to have their piece. Uh, so a few reminders, your name and your address for the record, please. Please direct your questions to the board, in a lot of instances, we're going to let someone from the applicant team respond directly, and some might not, but please direct your questions to, to myself and the board, and we will, uh, do our best to get you some answers. Yes, ma'am?
Lizzo Riley, once again, I'm able. Um, I just have a couple of questions on the new design.
Sure.
The houses that are gonna be at Old Oak and Bucket, originally there was supposed to be five, with the house, the, uh, bombhouses. Has that been cut down now? I couldn't tell from the.
Yes, so there will be three units along Old Oak and Bucket.
Okay.
All freestanding single-family homes, attorney Delisi showing you there for the benefit of everyone.
Okay. And then two over here. Okay.
There'll be two freestanding units on the Maple Street side of the entrance.
And the other side.
And one freestanding unit on the rotary side of the entrance.
So my other question, I guess, to that is the farmhouse's historical site, has the historical society given the year to vet that property before they're listed?
So we discussed that in a prior hearing, and so it is a good opportunity for refresher. That one-year waiting period is a town land use regulation. This board takes over all other boards with respect to town land use regulations under forty B. So we don't ignore that regulation, but that becomes part of our. If I'm remembering correctly, what we discussed, I think, two meetings ago was that is, does trigger the hundred, but it's not exactly a captain's house from the time of Whalen. And we also posed to the abutters, are you more interested in seeing that structure preserved? I gave my opinion, which I'm not shy about, because I used to be an abutter. In my mind, it wasn't exactly the most beautiful historical structure. That's a personal opinion. But we did pose to the abutters, would you rather see that preserved? Or would you rather see a new, more matching structure in its place? And the sense that we got respecting your ability to change all of your minds was that you'd rather possibly see a newer structure that fit with the rest of the development, otherwise it might stick out.
Well, and there was a question of whether that would, if it was rehab, whether it would actually be a two-family house or some other, right? It was not going to be a freestanding, single-family unit. So, or, you know, this keeps it, where the applicant went with this is to keep it all the same. Right? Approximately size similar, single-family.
So to the extent someone has a concern about the historical significance, they should absolutely raise that to this board. We will absolutely consider that, and often, as we do with other issues, we will consult the town board that would have gone before. But so that that is all on the table. But I I think that's an accurate summary of how we talked about that portion a few weeks ago.
And can I talk about the track story where she was just talking about?
Absolutely.
Okay, so I think that we had brought up before the speed on Old Oak and Bucket, and it's been paved, which is lovely. And on August fifteenth and August twenty-second, the town and the police recognized that Old Oak and Bucket is a problem speeding and had speed traps on their road. So I think that that has to be taken into consideration, that people speed on that, and whether we cut down from thirty-two to twenty-four units, there's still the issue of that coming up to that intersection. And the other thing she brought up was other areas. And in front of the planning board tomorrow night in Norwell, the three-twenty-two Old Oak and Bucket, which is the second house beyond the town line of six. On the same side of this development is going to be an entrance to a, a house is going to be knocked down, and it's going to be an entrance to a twenty-six unit subdivision. So that will be coming out, and if the rationale is everybody's going to come up and turn right to go to the train, these people are going to turn right and go through the dangerous intersection to go to the train.
So that is useful information. I had heard that there was a, and I did not realize it was that close.
Yeah.
Honestly, we need to get more information about this RSA, and and we need a better understanding of why the town wouldn't want to pursue it. Kristen, if you could come off mute just for a second, I just want to make sure my understanding and assumptions about an RSA are accurate. This is some version, it's a state governed review, is that correct?
The state gets involved, yeah. Typically, these are done if you have a development. There's something called an H-SIP location, which is a highway safety improvement improvement program location, and and the DOT maintains the database of these locations, and they're typically in the top five percent of the regional planning authority of that that regional planning authorities crashes, the top five percent locations that have the highest number of crashes. These these locations do not fall within to that bucket, I suppose. But the crash rates do exceed the statewide and district-wide averages for how many crashes per million entering vehicles you should expect at an intersection. They're they're significantly higher than these averages. And basically, what an RSA does is it just, it includes people from the town, people from the DOT, the consultant, and and what you do is you you analyze the the crash data, and then you all meet together on site, and what you do, you look at the crash data and you look at the intersection, and you try and figure out what sort of improvements can be made to increase safety at these intersections. It's not necessarily expensive reconstructions of intersections. The improvements are laid out into low, mid, and high-cost improvements. I think low-cost improvements are less than ten thousand dollars. Mid costs, I think, are between ten thousand and fifty thousand, and anything over fifty thousand is considered a high-cost improvement. But essentially, what they are, it's really just coming up with ideas, it's brainstorming ways to make the intersection operate more safely. The improvements can be small as, you know, such as a lot of these crashes are happening at night, so it could be increasing safety, but these are the answers you don't know until you sort of go through the exercise. It's not necessarily, RSAs aren't necessarily committing you to doing any specific improvement. It's just really a way to brainstorm how to improve safety at these intersections.
And Maple Street is bad, but getting out at one-twenty-three is a death trap.
Sure, and so Kristen, relying on you a little heavily here. My, I'm very familiar with the neighborhood. I I read the applicant's traffic report quite thoroughly, and I'm a little bit familiar with traffic challenges to forty B's. My interpretation, and I would welcome Sydney to tell me if I'm off base or Kristen or anyone on the board, is the one-twenty-three and overall rotary intersection is intermittently at certain times of the day gets more traffic than it can handle in a perfect world. And this development is not a significant addition to it, and it's going to be it's hard to even argue that this development at any given point in the time of the day makes a anything more than a one or two or five-second addition to the average wait time. Going a step further, it would be almost impossible to challenge the unit count at this development under a forty B because of the traffic situation at the one-twenty-three intersection, given as far away as it is. Safety data at Old Oak and Bucket and Maple, given its proximity and given the different type of intersection that it is, a much stronger challenge if the data is there. And Kristen, and you correct me if I'm wrong, due to the proximity, whatever impact this development has, especially when combined with a similar development almost equidistant on the other side, from a traffic review standpoint, there's a much greater impact. Would that be accurate?
Yeah, that that's accurate, and and that's sort of why we suggested also including any any sort of developments that are happening in Norwell, just because of the proximity here, and multiple small-scale developments do add up to to have sort of an impact. So that's why we suggested them, including that information as well.
And the speeding issue, which I think is a real issue, really goes to optimizing the entrance slash exit to the development, right? To Kristen's point about sightlines and ability to kind of get in and out of that, right? Because that that becomes an issue of safety for the residents, right? And and, you know, so so I think that's I think that's en masse, obviously, doable, right, as far as the recommendation, and I think that's what the applicants are everything about, and has nothing to do with an RSA or or the overall number of cars that this is going to be adding, right? So so I think that, I think elevates that to to sort of a little bit higher level, I think, to pretty clearly. And then, yeah, I think the Maple Street question, it's just, I think it's a question, I think, something we should look at.
And I don't know if you've been following this, but the town, since Old Oak and Bucket got paved, the question of speed has come up, and it was discussed at a recent select meeting. Police are stepping up enforcement, they are actually going to start looking at Old Oak and Bucket as a whole for traffic enforcement, things like that. So they are looking at it. I don't know if they're doing it for an RSA, but they are looking at it.
I think it just is at the point that it's a dangerous area.
Absolutely.
You know?
Without a doubt.
And whether it's ten houses or twenty-four, it's still a dangerous for it, and then the road comes down there. Because I went to two sixty-five, and I used to have a hard time getting out of two sixty-five.
True.
Yeah, no, it's it's a fair thought.
In terms of ingress and egress from the development, is there any reason to expect that you all aren't going to make the modifications to vegetation and whatnot to meet the recommended state sightlines?
No, and as a matter of fact, for Jeff to provide answers, I'm actually going to send a survey crew back out, and where the new, maybe the new road meets Old Oak and Bucket, and you come back fourteen point five feet, and we will survey out three hundred and fifty feet, so we'll be able to show everything. Maybe we're not going to show a two-inch sap line, but we're going to show anything that's six-inch caliber of tree. And anything that we visually obstruct.
Right.
And then.
Side, you know, we care more side and all that, right? And our engineer will obviously review that, so there there are DOT and various sort of have recommendations for sightlines when you pull out. How far can you see? How far can you see? Based on the traffic data for that road, and we have every intention to pull them to those recommended sightlines. Intersections are another story, obviously, there's a lot of that that's outside their control. But Janine, as a follow-up to this meeting, can you draft an email back to DPW, fire and police with me on it, asking them, again, to renew the conversation about an RSA and mentioning that it has been recommended by the town's traffic engineer? And then, and also, are you able to just do some research or to reach out to Norwell for some information about that pending development?
So so if I might jump in there, I happen to be involved in that pending development.
Okay.
I was a part of the development group. I just got involved recently. I'm going to be representing the buyer of that property.
Okay.
So I have some familiarity with it.
Okay.
One of the things that's interesting about it for what it's worth is that it has frontage on it, it has its road, its road goes in one direction, and there's an entrance on Old Oak and Bucket, and there's an entrance on Cross Street. And so I I, the only reason why I point it out is because that folks have two different opportunities to, you know, you can access one-twenty-three from Cross Street. You can access one-twenty-three on the opposite side. You're not necessarily needing a right turn to go only towards one-twenty-three at the rotary. And on the speeding question, I just wanted to point out that this this Riley makes a really good point on speeding. What I happen to notice is that the proximity of this property with respect to that intersection itself, I would imagine that in this particular proximity, that probably, since cars are coming to a stop or just starting to move again, are probably not likely to speed, but I don't have any personal experience with it in that particular location. I just wanted to.
They don't stop.
They don't stop.
Yeah.
They're definitely brown house now.
That's a true thing.
It's already stopped, right?
Which is.
Yeah, it is a problem spot.
So so, yes, so, Janine, because in that letter, we just, I think we want those entities to understand that there is another pending development not very far away that will impact at some level that intersection on Maple Street, right? And that's, I think, everybody's called it, my American turn around that.
Sorry. Just to be honest to this, as far as the house, the two houses that are going to be Old Oak and Bucket and Setback, I don't think I would sleep well with those cars whipping by, if they're that close to Old Oak and Bucket. That has potential not a good night's sleep.
I follow. Sydney, Attorney Mara, this is the the counsel of the board and town council, do you have any familiarity with a town not wanting to perform an RSA? It's a very random question, so I totally understand if you don't.
I don't. I would be curious to know the reasoning
Yeah.
as to what their concerns about it would be.
Going through with it, yeah.
And be in a better position to answer.
Of course.
We, we, I mean, it could be cost, it could be time.
Yeah.
It could be a whole host of things, right?
I do think we need to flush that out a little bit more, given neighborhood concern about the intersection, give it more familiarity with the intersection, and given what we're getting from our own engineers. So I think we sort of already had that conversation, but now maybe we have a little more ammo to have it with a little more depth. Anyone else in the room? Anyone on Zoom have any questions or comments? You can, I should mention, you can raise your hand by raising your virtual hand through the Zoom feature, turning on your video and raising your hand. Or there's you can even unmute yourself if you can't figure that out and try to speak, and we'll see how that goes. We don't see any raised hands. So we have some board questions. There's a lot to come. Yeah. All right. Susan? Okay.
No.
All right. So even if we don't have any specific questions there, I I, what I'd like to talk about is is where we go from here. Obviously, and correct me if it's misconception, you're now going to have a more detailed set of plans in terms of the physical locations. Those are going to be conveyed to the town's engineers. They're going to have an opportunity to review that. Attorney Delisi mentioned approximately six weeks for a continuance. So I think the question our engineers will have is, at what point in those six weeks will they get what they they need to start their approximation?
I would say approximately four, four and a half days.
So four and a half weeks. My guess is a week and a half in December is a little bit short for the town's engineers to complete their review.
I mean, I I think we may get the effort to complete the review at that time, but whether or not we can have another round of comments to be addressed would be, where are your fingers tied?
Yeah. I mean, I I personally would rather see it go into after Christmas. So
Yeah.
Devon Devon company have plenty of time.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, nobody here is going to delay this, we're not, you're not, but I mean, revised plans may be perhaps a preliminary response to the original commentary, right, in light of the new plan?
Well, I, to be honest, for me, the original commentary is gone.
It's Well, but you can come up with, you know what their general issues are, right? You can present it in a way, yeah.
I'll be, again, everything affects everything, so everything's going to change.
Yeah.
The only thing here that's probably not going to change is the pre-development drainage analysis, right?
Right.
So everything else is going to change. It's going to be, I think, our original submission of fully engineered plans was in excess of 12 plan sheets.
Yeah.
You know, that's what you'll be getting, that's what Devon will be getting along with the stack of drainage calculations, mapping calculations, et cetera, et cetera. So it's a, it's going to be a lot of work on our part and it'll be a lot of work on your engineers' part.
They need to get that, they need time to get it, review it and respond to you. And then ideally, you would then have time
To respond.
to figure out what you're going to accommodate and what, in my mind, you are going to say we'd like to not accommodate or we disagree with their conclusions. And at that point, and preferably not before, I'd like to have you come back here.
I think I think that's the smarter approach.
I think it sounds like that's going to take two months. I wish it was. Wasn't going to take two months, but I, the only thing worse than having this drag on would be making everybody come back for a meeting where we're not talking about some things that are moving us forward. Right? Because then we're we're talking about you guys.
Yeah, just heard you guys.
I think
I I if we're going to go into the first week of January, let's just go into the second week of January.
I think that's right.
Seriously, so so
I'm sorry.
I thought I heard my name. Like somewhere in the week of the ninth to the 13th, with the exception of that Tuesday. Would be what I'm thinking.
Can you wait until
January?
Are you trying to avoid?
No, I'm just I'm trying to avoid two meetings in one week.
Yes.
Yeah. I'm trying to figure out what I'm going to get.
Yeah.
Town is going to like repair over town. They're riding up truckers. We should get health insurance.
Yeah.
So to the ninth, we're saying that.
This one looks available on 12/13.
We got to do it, we got to do it.
So we're looking at January 11th? And January 11th, it's almost December, it's almost November 11th, so do you think it's realistic to get our engineers the package that they'll need by the end of the first full week in December?
By the end of the first full week in December?
What's the ninth?
There you go, the ninth.
Yeah. Yes.
That's going to give you three weeks to get back to them? Maybe two and a half weeks to get back to them, and then they have more than a week to review and 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 then have something to present to us.
We'll make every effort to get it, get it in.
Great. Because that's what I would expect to see is your submissions, their responses, recognizing that from what I've seen and comparing it to some other 40Bs, your engineers and their engineers don't seem to be very far apart on a lot of issues in the grand scheme of things, so your new plans, their proposals and most significant areas of concern, and then your responses to those, whether they be agreements, disagreements or changes or not changes, and for this board to review. And then also, more in your mind, I'd like to see in advance of that hearing, a relief list. I'd like to start that review at the January hearing. Especially because to the extent that the list of areas where the engineers are separated is short, I I don't want to unfortunately, I can't believe I'm saying this, I don't want that meeting to be too short. I'd 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 rather get more done, and I think it's time to start talking relief.
When you said it, you mean waivers?
Yes. Yes. Yeah. The the laundry, which I'm sure is going to shrink and grow at that hearing and the before and after, but I think it'll be time to start talking about that. It'd be great if the board could see that in advance of the hearing. And a week in advance of the hearing will be there.
So so I I I I was thinking about somebody else while you were speaking at one point, and I just wanted to make sure I was clear on the on the uh, some little timeframe.
Yeah.
So so we're looking at a date in the like, you know, the 11th of January.
Mm-hmm.
And then what we're we're trying to accomplish is to is did you did you set some timeframe for submissions or just the folks are going to work it out?
What we'd like to accomplish is a full following of the engineering. Applicant to the town's engineers and then back to the applicant.
Yep.
And we, I threw out a December 9th to them. Try to make it earlier, and if it's December 14th, it's December 14th, I don't know. You know, it is what it is.
But but it's going to just hamper your ability to respond to their commentary, right? So, you know, today's the first, if you can get it on in a month, right, and they have three to four weeks to respond, so it'll give you somewhere on order of one to two weeks to prepare a response that comes to us and everybody in time so that we can look at it and start thinking about the issues that are resolved, resolvable, unresolved, and you, which you can be relieved on, right?
Right. I mean, to be to be honest, maybe it's a redesign, but the but the well ends haven't changed and you have to figure those out now. And the units have shrunk, this big piece of land. We have a butters who've expressed a good deal of concern about traffic, but not a lot of other significant concerns about the project overall. And so I I want to make some progress at the next hearing. And I haven't seen any reason that we can't. Maybe we will when we get down to where the engineers differ, but I I think it's time to make some progress at the January hearing.
Yeah.
And and start talking about making decisions on at least certain points.
Yeah, I had a I had a waiver list going for the former scenario, so take another heart look at it, we'll give you guys some.
Fantastic. Any
Are these diagrams available online? I was going to get the copy of the new diagrams, so.
Janine?
I have a Mr. Coffee, but I'll be putting it online tomorrow.
Okay.
So that that will, that PDF will get uploaded, which is probably more helpful because you'll be able to zoom in and whatnot. And now, ma'am, yes?
Yeah, Karen Ma, 550 Buck and Bucket. So you just said, I mean, it's the traffic, the safety, the roads, that is up in the in there. But the setback is, it needs to look like it is streamlined with the with the um, the street all the way the houses are. So it sounds like, I mean, I was thinking, but those one and two and three, but they'll be like corrected on the street? So in fact, that's, that it doesn't go in line with the way the street is.
Okay, so
So I'm concerned about that too, because I think that all plays into the vision as well.
Yes.
It it on the road, because and then I could talk about Maryland, which is like when you go Buckville Hill heading towards 123.
Yes.
Those poor people who live on Maryland, I I don't have to get out every day, I know I have a hard time and I have two driveways to choose from.
Right.
But Maryland's one way in for those people that live there. And in the speeding, they they said there's been quite a few accidents there. And in Maple and Old Oak and Bucket, there was an accident there, less than a day. Well, I don't know, it was about a month ago, probably.
Sure, I follow you there on the traffic, but what I don't want to give us is you seem to bring up separate from traffic, but just a good concern about appearance and overall and going to the setbacks. Don't don't hold that back, when we when we have that opportunity for the for you all to speak up before, please do get those in, the board needs to hear that. And I can sort of take that comment I made a moment ago to flush out, because I felt like there probably was more. Don't don't be shy about those. The the board absolutely scrutinizes certain aspects of these applications further when we hear from a butters that they have more concerns. We are very cognizant of the fact that you all have to live next to this project. And you're the best identifiers of concerns for the town. So so please, don't hold back giving us that. Absolutely, the setbacks, the relief lists that you just heard us asking for is specifically what they will need waivers for. Setbacks from Old Oak and Bucket will absolutely be on that list. And we're going to be getting some full-size plans, the plans that are in front of us now, PDFs are going to go up on the website, so you can zoom it in. And a little bit of the back and forth that's going to happen between the engineers, traffic, entryway, things like that, have the potential to affect some of that. We give them some feedback tonight on moving the Maple side units a little bit further back, because they are really a little bit closer than they even need them to be right now. So that's going to get flushed out, that is absolutely still on the discussion list.
But, you know, at some point, we may may have to make certain trade-offs, right? We heard that earlier, with wetlands versus setbacks. For example, for example, what we hear from you will will, I don't want to say will push us, but it it may very well influence us to make certain choices at certain levels, right? So if things are important for you, to Anthony's point, please let us know, right? But that's what we're trying to to get at here.
Sorry, ma'am.
Oh, I just want daily address in 170 Maple Street, the park tests and the wetness of the land, that is still up for, or more information to come on that.
So more information to come, they've conducted their tests. That is a, hon- honestly, it's it's math. The the test happens, and correct me if I'm wrong, the test happens, the results of the test require, there's a chart and it tells you how big, what I call the leaching field, and probably has a more technical term now, needs to be. And then where it needs to go, and then there's setbacks from it under Title V, which we're not going to give them relief from, because we don't have that power. And that sort of is what it is. Our engineers may comment on some of that, they may not, again, because it's sort of math of the results of what happened on a test, they absolutely do give that a look as part of their review. It's it's probably one of the more settled aspects of the application, at least in terms of the relief that we're here to give.
But what we did hear from them is that they did that analysis and they found that they are now limited to 66 bedrooms for the dollar, right? So that's where that came out to.
One thing that that brings up, yeah, and that I have in my notes is you plan about basements, because people want basements, great, the basements are going to be wet, great. You're going to have systems in place to deal with that. I you mentioned 40B is very clear on the regulations in similarity and consistency on the exterior of units. It's a little more complicated on the interior of units. I do want to hear a little bit more from you about some pump systems and basement protection systems, what the plan will be in your units, and what the plan is for consistency between your market rate units and your affordable units. You know, everyone in the situat basically has a doctorate in these systems, almost everyone, and they can be expensive, there's a cost to maintain them, and that just gets a little complicated. We'd like to hear a little bit more from you on that front, yes?
Same topic, and the I'm wondering, since we've got a requirement to infiltrate runoff here, think about what happens to the water that's coming out of those subpumps.
Yes.
Are they going to galleries for infiltration, is it cheap drainage? And that, that probably will at least as much water as we're running in most cases.
Well, when I lived at 297, it's a lot more than runoff.
Yeah, we had the
It was, I I it was fully disclosed when I saw it, but I'll be surprised if we weren't breaking some form of regulation with how much water we were pumping out of our basement on a lossing basis.
I lived in 265 where the intermittent riverway stream is. It's more there than intermittent. And I lived there for 10 years.
And it is what it is, and if you as a developer decide to put basements on your units, I, as far as I'm concerned, that's your right, but I do think this board is going to want to understand a little bit of the plan for consistency between the market rate and affordable units there.
And again, you have, you spread them out as the plan currently stands, right? There may be some that, some sets of units that require certain remediation and other sort of stuff. We, if that's the case, we're going to want to see that to a level of detail that convinces us that you're treating all the units fairly.
If I quickly mention, there's a, you know, a dispute, there's one brand name. It's called the WR Grace System, we should say waterproofing system.
Yep.
There's many technologies available.
Yeah.
By the way, it's, we just don't understand that, right?
Sure. But I think to Bob's point as well, to the extent the plan says that you are sending to the town's engineers, isn't planning on addressing the discharge from those systems? I I think it should.
Let's ask one quick question. The original bedroom count is down, so is the reserved septic area no longer in play on the backland or is that still in play?
It's very much, very much still in play. Yeah.
But it won't be, the vegetation will be left until it's needed?
Yeah, I agree. It could be
20 years.
Or 50.
Right.
Very same.
But you're not clear cutting it?
We're not doing anything clear cutting there. What we will wind up doing is creating an 18-foot wide pathway with some crushed donut to get down there 20, 30, 40, 50 years from now for the primary fence.
And that pathway is on the current plan, yes?
Yes.
Yeah.
And that was the pathway that you used to cross over from the conservation when you had to get permission to pass it to this, to do the
Correct.
So with that, I was going to, you have anything else?
I would encourage pushing back Old Oak and Bucket as far as you can.
I'm going to make a motion that we continue this hearing to January the 11th.
You said the 11th, right?
And the plan would be to have that in this room, or a select board hearing room. Do we have a sec?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It is unanimous, we're continuing to the 11th. Thank you. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. A motion to, uh, make a motion to adjourn the hearing? All those in favor?